Showed up, so, you know, we're all ready to go. Thank you all for being patient. Today is December ninth and we're here for the Development and Transportation Committee, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. Before we begin, well, I guess, Madam Secretary, you should call role. And that should be simple and short.
Chairman Sarmiento?
Here.
President.
Committee member Ben Aviles?
President.
Vice Chair Martinez.
Great, so we have a quorum, and the first thing I'd like to start with is any public comments. So we do things kind of informally here. I know at the City Council, we have green cards that we have. I think we have the green cards here. Madam Secretary, back here if anybody wants to fill them up. If anybody wants to speak, raise your hand, I'll recognize you. But if anybody wants to make any comments here at the front end, let us know and we can go ahead and do the filling out of the cards afterwards. Anybody wish to speak at this moment? Great, and so when we go to your agenda item, we'll be happy to go ahead and take any public comments there. Seeing none, let's move on to the agenda items. The first one is approval of the minutes, and I'll entertain a motion.
I move.
Second, unanimous by acclamation. Moving on to the second item, I believe that's yours, Hassan, and I'll go ahead and yield the floor to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a report on the project, proposed project at Third and Broadway. As you know, in 2014, the city issued an RFQ to, with about six goals and visions that were identified for the project, and but five proposals were presented, and none but one project included a hotel component that at that time was, became clear was very important to the council members. And then we came to you and per your direction, we went back and met with every one of the developer, development firms that had submitted a proposal and gave them the opportunity to rethink their proposal and then see if they could do the hotel component, not necessarily on the site, but elsewhere in conjunction with the project in downtown, and allowed them to re-present their ideas and revamped their ideas if they would like to, and gave them a deadline. And four of the three, one of them had dropped out and continued to be dropped out, three of them proposed pretty much the same proposals that they had proposed before, but Caribou came back and then as late as that first gave us a series of concept drawings, and last week, two weeks ago, they gave us more developed drawings that, based on the proposal that they have offered, we think Caribou has, is much more in line with the original goals and the objectives that were outlined in the RFQ. The concept and the design and the components of the proposed project meet the goals of, that were outlined. However, there is no information on budgeting and there is no pro forma added, no financial source has been identified, and no programming of structure. And we have, to be fair, we have never asked for that. So at this point, staff's evaluation shows that that would be the one proposal that meets the most of the proposed visions for the project. However, if the committee would like us to pursue this, we would, we would recommend that you direct us to go ask the developer to then propose detailed pro forma and, and funding sources and the scheduling of, and phasing of the project based on the funding sources for our analysis and to bring it to, for your consideration in the future. None of the other proposer, proposals meet the criteria that was outlined fully, so.
Thank you for that background, and I know, you know, this whole process of going out to procure for an interested developer for that site, I think predates even many of you who are with the, with the staff now. And so it, it's been with us for a little while, right, council members?
Right.
You know, we appreciate all the work that all of you've done to get yourself up to speed. I see, I see somebody representing Caribou here. Council member, if you don't mind, if you want to say a few words on behalf of the proposal, or do you let it speak for itself? Mike, what are your thoughts?
No, I'm, I'm fine with it. I pretty much everything that Hassan has stated, and we're looking forward to continuing on to keep putting something together and get a whole other project together.
Great, thanks for being here and thanks for submitting, and I know we had some other interested folks, and I think we circulated twice, you know, so, you know, to the extent that there's interest, and maybe there's interest that may not match exactly what we were trying to look for, that doesn't mean that, you know, we're, we're going to completely disregard anything, but I'm going to go ahead and open it up, and, you know, council member, if you have any comments or questions?
Thank you, Mayor Portem, and staff for, for the update. As Mayor Portem Sarmiento referenced, this has been sometime a number of years that we've been working, as we have gone out twice. Actually, in fact, I think all, all, all four of our, the empty members across the table here, this predates each, each of you, and the, the main thing and interest and that I have, and I think my colleagues and the committee is, is that we, that we move forward with something, you know, quality tangible and, and that we're proactive. It's, it's, we've been talking about it for a long time, basically. So to the degree, I, I trust the, the, your professional perspective, what you bring from your respective different municipalities, cities that you worked in previously, and just ask that you help us to be able to put something, something together, a quality project that as expeditiously as possible so we can move forward. I just came back from the Chapman Economic Forecast Conference, and that there is indication that there is, that the economy and construction and such, there is financing and that there is a direction. It's not necessarily a huge spike, but there is support there, and I just want to make sure that we don't miss out on, on opportunity as a city. There is a lot of momentum. Mention often, I feel like that the winds in our sails as a city, particularly in our downtown, although not exclusively in our downtown, other parts of the city as well. The, the recommendations, I'm sure, the Gani that you referenced with regard to the pro forma, the scheduling, financing, you know, I think whenever we, this is a project that, where the city would be a partner because it is property that the city owns, one of the last few parcels that we have to be able, and it's a prime parcel. So making sure that we have all of these questions answered, eyes dotted, t's crossed, and make sure that we're able to, to see that it's a viable, strong project, quality design, all of, as we've discussed in the past, that, that's the best interest, and that's, that's my question interest, that the best interest of, of the city moving forward. So I just ask you to, to help us diligently put that together, again, as expeditiously as possible. Been talking about this for some time, and so we can go ahead and, and make some decisions, bring something full council and move forward.
Yeah, thank you, councilman, and that's where I think we want some guidance from, from staff, is that my recommendation is similar to the council members, is to go ahead and move it at a committee, because I think this, we're going to break a record for having an agenda item on committee, and I don't want to be the chairperson of breaking that record. I think we're going on maybe three years or maybe two and a half, but again, no fault of your own, it's something that, you know, predated your time, and I think to echo what the councilman said, we have complete confidence in your ability to scrutinize anybody that comes before you, which is different than what we had before. I think so now, whoever you work with, whoever becomes the partner in the city on this, we know that the right questions will be asked, the agreements will have the right terms, will have the right conditions, and I'm completely confident in that. So to the extent that you can give us some direction, my, my suggestion would be similar to Councilman Ben Aviles, is to move it to the council, because we've seen it conceptually, we've seen it already in renderings, but to me, that's not really the linchpin. The threshold for success here is, can it be financed? And I think, can it be financed in a way that the city is going to benefit, and this is going to be moved fairly quickly, because again, we're talking about windows of opportunity that are going to close, and if we don't move on it now, you know, we miss that, we miss that cycle. And, and I know we've missed cycles in the past, and it's, it's kind of frustrating because, again, this is one opportunity, an asset that we have that's unencumbered, it's exactly where, you know, it needs to be, and I think when, you know, our, our city manager came on with the city, I think one of the first things he said is, you know, why would you have a multi-level parking structure in the heart of the downtown where everything is growing and moving? So that was exactly what our sentiments were. So I think all of us want to see something that's interesting, exciting, that's going to continue that momentum that we have there. So any suggestions from, from both you gentlemen that could help us?
Yes, so we would like you to concur with the staff recommendation, and after we do our due diligence, do the pro forma, ascertain a financing plan and implementation schedule, then I think what you're saying is just bring that to the full council, don't come back to committee.
I think that's exactly what we're saying, and any, I mean, I know it's, it's difficult to, to estimate, you know, what that time is, but I would like to not have it indefinite. You know, if for some reason we see that there isn't, let's just, for, you know, playing devil's advocate, if we don't have performance for those numbers and for that ability to prove up the, the financing, can you come back to us, you know, maybe update us at the council and say, we just haven't had any responses, is maybe that way to do?
Will you have an initial meeting, and then the developer gives a schedule, and then we'll let the council know?
That's what we'll do. We'll, we'll get a schedule from the developer, and then as we progress, what we can do, we can send memos to the members of the committee in the meantime, and, and as the progression goes forward, we'll keep you posted, and if necessary, we'll schedule it back to this committee, but we hope to get there sooner rather than later so that we can take it to council.
Great, hopefully that works for everybody, and councilman, are you in agreement? So I guess there's a motion embedded in there somewhere, Madam Secretary, but basically it's just to go ahead and move it out of committee and, and, and take it to staff so they can bring it up to the council. Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, moving on to number three, which is, that's yours, Fred, you're up, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Portem, and councilmember. Starting in 2013, there was a conversation about geophysical survey brought up by Signal Hill Petroleum. What it is that they would like to start an exploratory project in search of potential sources of oil and gas and minerals within certain sections of Orange County. City of Santa Ana happened to be within, within that route, so they wanted to get a permission to do their discovery and a test. They are telling me, Signal Hills, that they've received all the permits from other cities, and we're the last one that they require to get a permit to get their project going. Key reasons to allow them from our side to move forward with the project and bring it to this subcommittee is that they agreed to the following three or four principles. One is, the first principle is this discovery would not lead to any type of fracking whatsoever within the city of Santa Ana, which they have affirmed that. Staff would get their full cost recovery of arranging the work that they're doing. They have also agreed to work with us to implement some environmental friendly projects like median conversion along a certain part of the route to drought tolerant type of landscaping. And also, they would provide an excessive public outreach along the route because their type of operation can be a little intrusive. And also, most important thing is that because they're inducing vibration into the ground to find the cavities underground, they have agreed to guarantee any type of leak from our underground utilities infrastructure for one year, no question asked, within, within a certain reasonable area. So these are the four reasons that what, what we decided from engineering aspect, that yeah, they're qualified now to bring it to the subcommittee and later on be weighed in by, by council.
Chairman and Councilman Ben Aviles, I also want you to know, we've been working with this group for probably a year, and we've done a lot of due diligence. One of the referrals was Pat West, the city manager in Long Beach. I personally called him and talked to him. He said didn't have any problems, seemed to be acceptable by the community, good outreach, no issues. They're a similar sized city, have density, so I just want to let you know, we did do some calls to other city managers and didn't get any negative reports.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
With that, with that being said, Teague would give you a little bit of background real quick, outlook of what takes place as part of this exercise, and they have also provided, Signal Hills also provided some additional information that you have. They're also here represented, and they can answer any questions you have after we, we were done with, with the presentation. Teague?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President. Chair and Mr. Vice Chair, I wanted to give you a quick background on the, on the proposed geophysical survey. Within Santa Ana, it's, it's generally the portion of the city within our, within our jurisdictional limits west of the river. It, the, the survey itself, the entire survey in its totality is 35 square miles in West Orange County. That is within Anaheim, Buena Park, Garden Grove, Cypress, a few other cities and, and the county of Orange. And as, as Fred mentioned, they, they have permits in, in all of those cities. The purpose of the city would to be, would be to provide Signal Hill Petroleum with 3D mapping of the area and potential faults. This is a follow-up to work that was done in 2012 on two streets within, within Anaheim, Garden Grove, Stanton, and Westminster. It was really more of a pilot project done a few years ago. The method that they would use is, they would start out with pretty extensive outreach, as, as we've heard from other cities and from Signal Hill, quite a bit of outreach to the property owners, residents, and tenants, and then after that, actually, that outreach goes on during the length of the project. Just prior to the, to the, to the meat of the survey is, they install nodes nearby the routes. These, these nodes are like coffee can size receivers that are placed, there would be about a thousand of them within the city. They would be placed in parkways and in private property, all, all permitted and, and, you know, in working with private property owners. So they would place these nodes, and then along those, those routes that I showed you on the previous slide, these typically, I think it's about four trucks inch their way along the streets. They, they stop about every 55 feet and input acoustical energy with the, the plates, as you can see at the bottom of those trucks. They, they lower those plates, input acoustical energy, and then, and then that, that is reflected off the, off the layers, the geological layers, and then picked up by those nodes. So that data is then collected and prepared into a map. The staff, in, in some of the discussions, staff has identified potential damages that, that we would consider could happen. Some of the pipes in the city are up to 60 years old, the water sewer, storm drain pipes, and so we do have some concerns about that, and I know Fred has talked about the guarantees that, that the Signal Hill would provide. Obviously, there are other utilities in the street, sanitation district, and the gas company would also be a concern, and then potential damage to private property structures. Fred has already talked about this, that generally the schedule, the last thing in there is, at least the current schedule is, Signal Hill Petroleum would like to start the vibration portion of that work in May of 2016, and Fred talked about this part. We would come back to council with a recommendation for, to prepare an agreement, or to execute an agreement with Signal Hill identifying all of these conditions. And that's, that's the end of the presentation. We're here to answer questions, and Signal Hill is here as well. Great.
And I'll, I'll extend the same courtesy as I did to the, to the previous agenda item. If there's somebody here from Signal Hill who would like to address the committee and the staff, please feel free.
May I stand?
Sure.
Thank you for having me tonight. I'd like to just do a quick introduction. My name's Deborah Russell, and I'm the project manager, excuse me, for the geophysical, physical survey. I'm here with Dr. Mitch Barklidge, he's our chief geophysicist for the project, and Stephanie Gillette, who is on my team for project management and community outreach. I'd like to thank the staff that we've been working with for so long, and they do do a really great job of scrutinizing everybody that gets this far, so they've done excellent job. Thank you for the time that you have spent working with us and the presentation. I have just a little bit of a couple explanations on the project. So the survey, what it does, it's really a research study, and we're mapping the earth's geology underneath Orange County. We're creating a 3D map very similar to an ultrasound of a baby, and it's exciting to be able to see what these maps look like once they're finished. And it does not necessarily, it actually, it does not map oil or minerals. What it maps is geology, and, and as the acoustic sound waves are, you know, going through the ground, and they might bounce off clay or rock differently, or, you know, something else, all of that gets recorded by these units right here, these nodes, and it's downloaded into a supercomputer, processed, and then analyzed by our geophysicists and a big group of team to really create an amazing map of what's underneath our surface. And these nodes are very important because they're, this is what we're really getting our permit for. In Long Beach and Signal Hill, when we did the survey, it was a few years long, we actually were given a parade on that, and it was because of trucks that are, you know, kind of along down the street, and these are put in public right of ways, and they're buried into soft scape, and so the public or community really doesn't, you know, see them until we put them in and take them out and change their battery. But these are in public right of ways, and as Mr. Higgins said, where there isn't a public right of way, we'll work with private landowners. We also do extensive research, I mean outreach, and we'll work with school districts, the schools along the routes, and we bring, you know, the students out, and our geologists will come out and talk with them, and we make mailers, and we print them in different languages, and myself, Stephanie, Mitch, and probably about 45 other people on our team actually walk down the streets with the trucks doing extensive outreach, as Mr. Higgins said, during the duration of the project, too. There's also extensive pre-planning that happens before our trucks ever work on the streets. Our goals are very aligned, that we do not want to hurt infrastructure as much as you do not want your infrastructure damaged as well, because, you know, if we did something, we are responsible for it, and we will pay for that, and we will fix it according to whatever standard that is for your city and for your community, so we don't want anything to happen as much as you do. So we do pre-planning with our scientists to make sure that our, we understand all of your utilities, where they are, what type they are. We'll even plan points where we won't even survey, even if they might be on this map after we still meet with your public works team and anybody else that knows the streets really well and say, yeah, we don't want to be there either. So a lot of pre-planning happens, vibration levels are set way ahead of time and very carefully to make sure that we're not causing damage to infrastructure, but also, just as important to nearby structures, buildings, homes, you know, we provide near airports and hospitals and power plants and china shops and glass shops and windows. We drive every single street before we even put a truck on a street, and we'll go and talk to the property owners prior to our trucks being there, saying, this is what we have, what are your sensitive areas, what can we learn about you, and what do you need to know about us to make sure everything is good before we drive down the street. We meet with homeowners, and we talk to them extensively about the project. We want as many people as we can to know about us, who we are, what we're doing, so that way there's no surprises. And we found in our extensive, extensive surveys that we've done all over, that the more people know about us, the more curious they are, they're happy to be out there when the trucks are on the street, they go by, and they say, great, thanks, that was pretty interesting, I've never seen that before, and, you know, and we move on. We're proud of how we run our operations, and so we're happy to meet with and do whatever it is that cities need us to do for the operation. So again, our goals are very aligned to make sure that there's no damage to infrastructure or surrounding buildings, and we also will take care of this community as it was our own, because someday, you know, depending on what this survey and, you know, this mapping project says, we may want to come back and visit your, your city, and we want to be welcomed here versus we don't want you ever here and, you know, ever see you again. So we'll do everything that we can to make sure that we do it right the first time, and that we do what we say that, what we're going to do, and that, you know, we don't cause any issues, one, for your community, but two, for all of you as well, and the hard work that you put into learning about what we do. So to end, I'd like to say that this is just a mapping project. It is not drilling wells. You know, if we ever came back to your city, that's a whole nother process, that would probably last many, many years, and may or may not get done at the end of the day, but we will never know that unless we map the earth's geology, see what's there, and, you know, and then start that conversation after that. Lastly, I'd like to add that we have committed to donating the, the shallow information because we're looking very deep into the ground. We're not looking at anything, you know, shallow or underneath buildings or homes or any of that. And so we're looking deep, and we process, process only the deep data, but we work closely, we've worked in the past closely with Caltech, and we continue to do that through Dr. Barklidge's team, but we'll share information with them, and they're using our information to study ground motion, and they're actually, you know, changing models and looking at that, evaluating, doing amazing things with the science that we're providing them for free. The other thing that we've done is shared some of our information with the water replenishment district, and they're using this, this information for things that are very exciting to them. And in Orange County, we've mapped with the Orange County Water District, and have committed to donating data from our last survey as well as this survey for free and processing it for them, or assisting in getting it processed, because that's really, you know, the big, it was this expense, but then the processing and understanding of the data to apply it to their specific needs. We'll be doing that as well, and it's a great science project, and that's what it is right now at this point. We're excited about it, and we're happy to be here, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. If, can you stand by if you have any questions?
Absolutely.
Please feel free to have a seat, and if anybody from staff or the committee has a question for you, we'd love for you to join us and, and, and answer any of that. Yeah, it's a, it's a great science project, and you know, my 13-year-old is, is about to do his science project for school, so not a bad idea, right? So it's a good guy to talk to. I think, I think he'd get a pretty good grade for something like this. But I'll go ahead and open it up, and councilmember, if you have any questions or comments, I know I do have some questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of questions do have for staff initially. It, it sounds like you've done, like staff has been, been fairly thorough in some of the questions and studying this, city manager contacting the city manager in, in Long Beach. You know, whenever you're talking about, you've mentioned, you know, oil, petroleum, drilling, a lot, main, one of the more controversial questions, issues, fracking, and so, so all of those things will very likely be questions in the mind of the public, definitely of the council, that's part of what we wanted to be able to address. I did have an opportunity to speak with representatives of Signal Hill Petroleum earlier day, because I know this is, again, anticipating questions, issues that the community might have, questions that I had, have as well. This is all new, want to make sure to, that we address any adverse effects and all. At this point, as I understand, and was, was confirmed by staff and by speaker just now, it's, it's, we're, this has nothing to do yet with anything, anything related to, to drilling or to oil. It's, it's all from a, a study, a seismic study, seismic mapping. That's what I understand, both from the presentation, from what staff has, has presented. I, I am glad, though, that there are always going to be some type of, of potential, or e- either small effects even with traffic, slowing of traffic, time of staff as well, but I'm glad that you have included, and what's being recommended by staff, is full cost recovery on staff time, and, and I'm glad that there is also, as, as, because again, there are some, some effects to us, whether it be our staff or time impacts out there in the community, traffic and such, that there's some type of net benefit that we can also we can also point to. The converting of the median, something that we, that is, that is a, a, a real need in our community. So it's something that, that we can also point to, to our residents. Yes, we are spending the time as, as, again, our staff and, and there are some effects, but there will be also benefit from a, a tangible standpoint. As you know, there's, there's a very much an intentional commitment on the part of council to have open dialogue with the community. The more communication, we can never have too much communication. So the fact that extensive outreach to the public is a part of what's being required and what's being presented here is, is also helpful and gives me some peace of mind as, as a councilman. Couple of, of questions that I do have with regard to the agreement, there's reference potentially if we move forward, that we would provide permit, there would be some, some type of agreement. What, what would that agreement consist of? Is it primarily the indemnification and also confirmation that any type of potential damage would be addressed and, and covered by, by, by the organization, by this company? What, what is all, what would the agreement consist of?
That is correct. Basically, we have four or five items that we mentioned. They, there would be a exclusive and comprehensive public relation, protection of underground utilities guaranteed for one year, no question asked. Those needs to be addressed. And also, we would put in their, their commitment that at this point where they are is not, this is not intended to lead into fracking. Because I, I remember their last subcommittee brought that up and says, you know, it's a, it's, it's a no-go if this has anything to do with the fracking. So those are the main principles that we will, we will put in on the agreement.
When it comes to the Orange County sanitation district, no, we have sewer lines under our, our, our streets, the Orange County Water District. There's also reference of gas company. Are they involved in also, do they have to go through the process of permitting and all? The waters exclusively with the city and what type of communication do we have with, with the sand district?
Would you like to address them?
And the water district.
Yes. Thank you. In, in a letter that, that I've sent to all the cities to update where we are, we reach out to all the agencies that we can that might be affected in this so they can be a part of this survey as well. And we've reached out to Colonial Mutual Water District, Eastside Water Company, Golden State Water, Orange County Water District, Southside Water Company, Midway Sanitary District, Orange County Sanitation District, the gas company, Southern California Gas and Southern California Edison. And we've done that over the past years. And one, to get them aware of our, our project. And two, we worked with the gas company and they gave us, you know, information on where they said they didn't want, you know, us to have our trucks over. And they don't have any juris, I mean, authority to permit us, but we absolutely want to bring them in as, I don't want to call them partners, but people very aware of our project. And so we vetted through our project through all of them because again, we don't want issues just as each as they do.
Thank you. That's helpful. And I just would ask that our staff confirm with each, with each of those agencies, just that they are full aware, if they have any questions or anything of that sort. Would hate to allow permitting on our end and then it become issue with some of these organizations that are partners of ours. That the data, I imagine that any type of, and we go through a process of, of assessing and analyzing our asphalt conditions, a number of different things that we do to be able to just better understand and know the conditions of our own infrastructure. Imagine being able to have some of this data would be beneficial to the, the organizations or agencies such as the Orange County Sanitation District, Orange County Water District. So to a degree that, that, that information can be made available to them as well. It benefits our community and, and the region as a whole. So, so I would definitely encourage that and see that as, as a net benefit as well. So that, that addresses my questions.
Great. Thank you. And, yeah, no, I appreciate you coming before us and, and giving us some background. As a former member of the water district, I'm sure that they'll appreciate any data and research that you recover and see what the overdraft is doing to the aquifer. So that I know is, is, is heavy on all our minds just because of, you know, these four years of drought. So I know they'll appreciate that. As, as, as a council member mentioned, I will as well. For full disclosure, I did have a conversation with somebody on behalf of Signal Hill. And so thank you for that. And we didn't go into much detail, but I know I've been a, a little busy. So this is helpful to get the background from you. And I'm confident that whatever conversations were had with staff, I'm sure were thorough. So I know that what we're being asked of tonight is just to simply go ahead and defer and send this to staff so they can go ahead and work on an agreement. The only things I would mention is that on the outreach end of it, it is a tricky thing for us. We're still trying to figure out how effectively to, to outreach. We're a very hard to reach community because we have a diverse population that are many non-English speakers. So what I would recommend, just looking at the quadrant that you're going to be addressing in the city, there's many Vietnamese speakers and many Spanish speakers as well. So to the extent you can have your firm and your communication partners work on having, you know, multilingual, you know, discussion and outreach to them, I think that'll be helpful. The other, the other issue is on the nexus of the impacts. So we know that there'll be impacts and, and believe me, you know, sometimes you try to, you know, prepare for everything that you think may happen and sure enough, you know, something that nobody thought had happened. So to the extent that we, you know, we want to be reasonable in, in, in recovery of any impacts that we have, please understand that. We do have, you know, our infrastructure is much older than most cities, you know, that, that we're, we're going to, you're going to be dealing with. But we certainly appreciate you, you know, being responsible for everything that, that, that you do here. The other thing that was mentioned is obviously, I wanted to make sure and again, reiterate that the scope of this consent would be limited to the survey. And in the event that resources are found, that's a whole other conversation. And so we're fine with that. I think I'm fine with that. Although, you know, it's a slippery slope. So we, you know, just don't want there to be some inference made that while you allowed to survey, that means that everybody's, you know, great with, you know, the following steps. And that, that's, that's a much more difficult conversation as you know well. But, but I think, you know, given, you know, what we're, what we're allowing to have happen, I have confidence in staff that they'll, you know, make sure that, you know, the agreement is fair and the agreement is one that we can all, we can all do. My, my only question was is, since you have agreements with the other cities already, has any of the survey began in those areas or are you waiting to have all the cities before you begin?
Yes. Good question. So the cert, the survey portion where the trucks are driving down the streets, that cannot happen until all the cities are permitted and the nodes are in place. And that's the science of the project is, you know, a vibration could be happening in a different part of the project, but the nodes in Santa Ana are listening to those vibrations. These nodes actually caught the Japan earthquake in Long Beach. I mean, they can hear, they can, they're very sensitive. Excuse me. And so the way the science works is they have to be in place before the survey can start. So the fact that all the other cities are, are there and we're ready to go, we really need Santa Ana to be a part of this, to be able to move forward. Also, the survey is approximately four months long in total and Santa Ana only has eleven days of that project. And so it's, it's a very short portion, portion of the project. And as far as outreach, we'll be having Spanish speakers as well as Vietnamese speakers on our team. And the community that, that's along the truck routes, they're, they're really, I, I use the word touched, but three times we'll, we'll be getting with them on the project. And the first is a mailing of a, of a brochure, which I know staff has, but I'd be happy to send that again. The second is, you know, we'll put street delineators along the truck routes reminding a few days ahead. And then the third is, we all walk the streets and we're personally talking with team members that speak language and, and, you know, and standing there with community members that want to come out. And, you know, we'll reach every business, every homeowner and business owner along the truck routes as well. And then anything afterwards that's required to make sure that they're satisfied with what we did.
Thank you for that. I'm not sure whose ward this is, but I think it might be Councilman Reyna's, right? So we'll make sure we let him know. Cause I'm sure they'll probably call him up as well and they can maybe get a number to your, your contact.
Absolutely.
As well. And thank you for that visual as well. I didn't realize how sensitive that was. But when you said it's the size of a coffee container, you guys ever seen that movie, The Bucket List?
Yes.
So at, when I saw that, I thought, man, that's the one that went on top of the podium. And I think Jack Nicholson was, his remains were buried there. So in any event, I know that's the first thing I thought. It was pretty bizarre. But anyways, so I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to have the, have the agreement with staff so they can bring it up to the city council for its approval.
I'll move it.
Second, unanimous by acclamation. I think that takes care of our agenda items. Thank you very much for those comments and that background. Any comments from staff? Seeing none? It looks like we're going to get out of here early just because I think we're two-thirds of a committee, right? The other third probably would have kept us here for a little longer because it's the holidays, but, but it was our Christmas gift. So committee member comments?
Just want to thank staff for all of their hard work all year. And with that, Merry Christmas. Enjoy sometime with family.
Ditto. And I'll go ahead and adjourn on that being. So thank you all very much.